And we're off. So, welcome everybody to our December Planning Committee meeting, today, the 13th of December. We have a few plans to go through, so we'll go through those. 52322, declarations of any discutable junior interests. Done, shown, okay, thank you. 524, apologies for absence, Karen.
For Council, Brindle, Alice, James, Alcon.
Thank you very much. So, 52522, the minutes of the 8th of November, which were approved by full council on 29th of November. I'm happy to be signed as a true record of our last meeting. Thank you. On to the planning matters, page 52622, I understand A and B have been withdrawn.
Yeah.
So, we are into Plan 7657, Berry Road, and I gather Mr Reeve is with us, and we'd like to speak to that.
Thanks so much for hearing me, because none of the residents knew about it when you last discussed it. So, none of the planning notices were up, because the house knows our letters. So, it's a big technical, can I read this out very quickly?
If the councillors are happy to go with that, yep.
Yes, I can't, I can't ad lib it, there'll be some insinuating moments, you see.
We're listening intently.
This is a backland development, surrounded on four sides by dense existing housing. So, it brings with it all the problems associated with backland developments for its neighbours. Loss of privacy, overlooking, noise pollution. It's a development of four very small, single-storey houses and 10 car parking spaces. Nothing short of a new car park, really, in the middle of Beckford. Perhaps they'll put the car spaces out to left. The proposed new built semi-detached houses are below national space standards, that's in floor area, with no front gardens at all and very small rear gardens. Two conversions of the outbuildings also have no front gardens, and one of them has no rear garden either. No amenity space whatsoever. The sites in the conservation area, it neither preserves or enhances the character and appearance of the conservation areas that should do. There are six cottages on Berry Road, the back onto the site, which are great to list. My heart goes out to a young family with a two-year-old daughter who live in one of those cottages. They posted their objections on the Breckland website. They face the Berry Road with all the noise and pollution from constant heavy traffic and juggernauts that we all know of that. They've got no front garden to speak of and a very small garden, it's a very small rear garden. The rear garden is in fact all the relief they get from this. And there are now four car parking spaces proposed immediately adjacent their rear fence, bringing more noise and pollution for them. A new vehicle access road and pavement crossover to this site is proposed in Mill Lane, between numbers 22 and 24. This will mean, by most calculations, 40-plus vehicle movements a day, cars and vans in and out. Norfolk highways have assumed that Mill Lane is a quiet road. They've categorised it as a country road with slow traffic and have unbelievably allowed a reduction in the dimensions of visibility spray, you know, the sprays that you get as you come in here, each side of the new access. Highways and traffic engineers in Berry, experts in their field, are very concerned about the visibility of traffic coming out of the site and on Mill Lane, particularly because the visibility is over third-party land. In other words, land that the applicant's got no control over. If numbers 22 or 24, for example, decide to build a fence or a wall in their front gardens, the visibility would reduce, be reduced even further, nobody could do anything about it. Mill Lane is a rat run, as we all know, with vehicles speeding well above 30 miles an hour, I should know, I did a number 20. The road narrowing by highways has made no difference. Also, there is a problem in Berry Road, enormous, when there's a problem in Berry Road, enormous juggernauts take a shortcut through Mill Lane. 100-plus people will pass that site every day, I know because I've counted them, going to and from schools, GP surgeries and shops. Unaccompanied school children, elderly and disabled people and mobility scooters, night and day, in all weathers. There is no doubt that there is a serious or fatal accident waiting to happen if this development goes ahead. Finally, the site itself is designated as a scheduled ancient monument. The site of St Ethelred's Church, in archaeological terms, an Anglo-Saxon site of enormous importance. A site with high potentials for finds and features relating to the Saxon period, the 13th, the 11th, the 13th centuries in particular. Only just four exploratory trenches, small ones, have been excavated, but an unbelievable wealth of historic material has been unearthed in a very small area. It is difficult to imagine what a wealth of material would be uncovered if the site was properly explored and excavated. Material uncovered so far include silver refining debris connected to the silver meat in Beckford, a lot of pottery, 140 shards so far, a lot of skeletons of human and animal bones, of course, from the cemetery, and a lot of coins. Unbelievably, a silver penny from King Harold's brief reign, he of Battle of Hastings fame. Very rare, so the applicant will be very, very pleased to have that on my way. Dr James Albone's objections are on the Breckland site and worth reading. He is Inspector of Ancient Monuments for Cambridgeshire and Norfolk for Historical England, formerly English Heritage. He has serious concerns about the lack of supporting information from the applicant, I quote. "We also consider that the planning application does not demonstrate the public benefit of the proposed development in a manner that can be weighed against the level of harm to the significance of the scheduled monument of the site of St Ethelred's Church and adjoining area to the south, as required by the National Planning Policy Framework, the government standards." Dr Albone confirms that scheduled monuments are, and I quote, "an irreplaceable resource and should be conserved in a matter appropriate to their significance, so they can be enjoyed for their contribution to the quality of life and future generations." If this development goes ahead, this archaeological site and scheduled monument is lost forever. Please, on behalf of the residents, I get to this, strongly object to this planning application.
Thank you, Mr Reeve. Obviously, this came up before us and we had a vote on it and I think we narrowly, with it being a brownfield site, shall we say, that there was existing buildings we were converting through. Obviously, what Mr Reeve's brought to the table, I think, may bring us some new evidence in which to look upon it differently, especially even if it's just asking for a full archaeological dig to be done. But I'll throw it over to Collins, Dennis.
Mine's not, I'm fully supportive that we shouldn't do it because of the archaeological ideas, but the definition that Norfolk County Council gives as a country road with very little traffic, I think we need to challenge that and need to see if we can get Norfolk County Council to do a traffic count on that road before we go ahead. I don't know if our county councillors in that area could help us, but, you know, it's definitely not a country road with slow traffic. So, we need to challenge that, that's my opinion.
Dennis, Terry.
I wasn't at the previous meeting when this was discussed, had I been, then I would have spoken and voted against. Those of you that have been here for a while will remember a similar application some time ago, which was primarily thrown out on highways grounds because highways did object, particularly with the entrance and exit on Berry Road. Now, I appreciate this application does involve the blocking up of that entrance and exit on Berry Road, but I do still have quite considerable concerns about Mill Lane. We all know Mill Lane, it is a rat run, as described, and there is a lot of traffic that goes in and out of there. Some highways grounds alone, regardless of anything else, I think it should be objected to. We've seen quite a few of these sort of applications over the last few months, which, you know, you think about the, what's the pub, the Albion one, you know, it's classic overdevelopment, there's far too many properties in a small amount of space. You know, we're not creating decent-sized units for people to live in, frankly, it's not an improvement, it's a, you know, it's a very difficult situation, but I do think we should be objecting.
Okay.
I'm presently attending a planning session at Breckland. I just wonder when the highways look at these roads, because, you know, when they done the one by Aldi, the picture, I must have gone there at five o'clock in the morning, because there was no traffic at all. And you think, it's not realistic for them to, you know, they don't state, oh, we done this midday or school run time. I don't know when they come into it, take their photos and disappear again, but it doesn't give a realistic vision of the actual usage of the road.
I think we've had problems in the past with Norfolk County Council's traffic surveys, and they have taken them, whether it be in school time or that, and not giving the appropriate, you know, fair assessment of it.
During lockdown.
Yeah, I'm under impression that the residents either said they can't wait, don't want the gangway blocked up.
Very right, we're talking about.
Very right, they don't want it blocked, this is what I've heard. Also, going back to the original comments, I mean, this came through as a late plan. We had hardly any information at all, and I will finally disagree with you, there was only one objection to the whole plan on the night. Everyone else supported it.
We did have discussion, Chris.
We had a discussion, but it's one of the.
That's by the by, we're assessing it now objectively. That's the kind of one to come in, I think.
I mean, I'm really, I'm very supportive of it, I don't like the idea, the traffic flowing would be dangerous. There's infilling, there's overlooking people's houses, it's just a no-go development.
Just to, because I sent your links, there's quite a lot of conditions that highways have put against it. And interestingly, what you were saying, just to raise it, because I know there's been a lot of fans and you might not remember every single thing that I've sent you, obviously, that the access on to Berry Road shall be permanently closed to vehicular traffic and footway shall be reinstated in accordance with the detailed scheme. So, that was one of the things, and they were talking about the visibility spray that has to be 2.4 metres wide and that has to be free from an obstruction exceeding 1.5 metres above the level of the highway. Also, that the proposed access parking and turning shall be laid out, demarcated, levelled surface drained, et cetera, et cetera. And they also wanted the scheme detailing provision for onsite parking for construction workers, delivery, storage of materials, duration of construction. And the last one was they wanted a widening of the footway along Mill Lane frontage and closure of access on to Berry Road to be submitted and approved by the local planning authority. So, they have put several things in. I just want to ask if it's what you want to, those are the things you want to concur with.
I've got to make first.
I'm quite happy if it's an answer to your question, to go with Dennis first, because I was going to make a separate point. My points were, at the last meeting, when we talked about this, the reason it's come back again is because those sightlines have been increased. And I asked a question of, we all thought it was overdevelopment, but we as a council, as a group of people, it's all very subjective. We don't have a clear definition of what overdevelopment is. Is it, you know, four hours per acre, well, you know, what is the number? We're just sort of picking things up here. I still disagree with the development when it's inside those small pockets, I know they're brownfields, I know that they're, and we talked about quite a few recently, you know, with the development at the back of Vicarage Road, all of these, the same kind of objections every time. The highways one, for me, is a key piece now, because I wasn't aware that if somebody does build something in their property, those sightlines are going to be reduced, and in any case, and that's, you know, we've seen this time and again, where a promise has been made and it hasn't taken into consideration the neighbours. And my final point is, I think we've got a lot more detail about the historical evidence that may be rested in that place, which we didn't really have before. So, I think this is a different case now, we've got more information, it was very quick last time, Chris, I think. So, yeah, I kind of agree that we have got more information to go on this time. But as a group of people, we must decide what our objection looks like, because otherwise it is so subjective every time we come to something.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, just on the, on the point that they requested that the pavements be widened, which then, would that encroach on the road or would it be going the other way?
Well, they're asking for it to be submitted, so I'm assuming that they haven't got that plan yet, which is why it's one of the conditions.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So, am I sensing we want to be an objector to this?
Yes.
So, we then need to decide that the grounds upon which we're objecting, obviously, the highways aspect is something that has come to the fore, suggesting.
Can I make a couple of suggestions? And overdevelopment due to the small size of amenity space and housing space?
Yes.
I have written some of these down before, I'm not just making them up. Yeah, well, I thought that, you know, there might be a list. So, the other thing I put was is, yeah, the rear gardens on unit three and four were low minimum standard and unit one has no amenity space at all. So, that was to quantify that due to small sizes, so I can fill that in there. And I've just put to concur with highways comments and conditions.
Just on the, obviously, Mr Reeve made a statement about the barriers suffered based standards compared to what was being, but these revised ones, do they fit in with the suffered one or not?
Do they fit in the suffered one?
We've talked about the display, because it was a, I think we ought to be challenging the classification of the road, saying it's a small lane.
So.
In which case they would fire a stronger.
Okay, so that, is that actually a planning objection or is that something that we want highways to do additionally? As part of the objection?
Reducing the visibility spray, aren't they, given what Mill Lane is luring?
So, I think we're challenging Norfolk County Council's assessment of the road.
Okay, so, okay, concur with highway comments and conditions with the exception of the exception of the classification of Mill Lane.
Yeah.
Which we think should be reviewed.
I'm going to guess it could be sort of viewed as a rural, small village road, but it certainly doesn't get that traffic.
No.
Any longer.
So, put with the exception of the classification of Mill Lane, which needs revision.
Historic thing as well.
I think we've come to that, let's just go highways bit first. I think, just revision, I think, can we beef it up to say, due to the large volume of traffic that I'm using?
Yes. Or too large volume of traffic.
So, then obviously the historical side is something that, sorry. Can Gaten put anything on there or just?
He's put an objection.
So, he's put an objection, the Norfolk landscape, archaeological, it will usually have a view if it's a scheduled monument. There's nothing strong on there from them.
But what it is, is it's whether it's material condition.
But given that if it is a scheduled site, then they.
So, we put that there are concerns about destruction of a.
Yeah.
Go to a monument.
Highlighting that it's in a conservation area is really important, because so often we get these applications and we find out they're not in the conservation area. So, this one actually is. So, mentioning then that and also drawing attention, as Dennis says, to the fact that it is designated as a scheduled ancient monument. We, I've read Andrew Gaten's response and it says, you know, we've had a conversation about this in advance, but we can't see what his advice and comments was, so we don't know what his concerns might be, which puts us at a disadvantage. But one would hope he has actually said something.
But we can make our statement and, yeah, debut of the company.
Yeah, there was, I can't remember exactly who it was from, but in the papers that were on the planning portal, there was quite a long description of the archaeological state place, and I think it might have been.
That was from James Ablane from Historic England.
Oh, Historic England.
Historic England, yeah. And I think in there, the inference was that they would expect, they would expect certain conditions to be, such as a raft, so that suddenly the foundations wouldn't go deep. And I imagine reading through the lines as well, they would expect a full archaeological dig at the time.
So, I think we need a reference to Historic England's comment.
Yeah, that's right, I mean, there is, there was quite a long document in there.
So, with Historic England comments?
So, I don't think it would, they wouldn't just turn up and dig as a builder, it would be quite a lot beforehand. If that, if they.
If that condition was to allow.
Yeah.
That document.
Anything for that, we're used to it. Okay, so.
Well done.
Okay, so you're happy, we're happy here to stay and listen to the other planning, but otherwise, uh.
It's a talkall, yeah.
With much more entertainment.
It is actually. Thanks very much, Andrew.
Thank you, sir.
You have brought a lot of papers, so you'll have to give me a couple of moments to shuffle it.
Yeah.
That's the detailed information.
Yeah.
I think the talking about, while I'm shuffling these, the problem with late planning applications, is there's any of the day planning cycle? And there's, we have a 28, we have a monthly cycle. So, there's always going to be times when things come in late. I mean, we've got four lates today, that if we don't see them today, they'll fall outside of the planning cycle. So, sometimes, you know, I mean, but the process we went through in that bringing it back was exactly the right process to follow. So, if that happens, then we can bring it back again and, you know. So, I think that sometimes it just, the timescales don't work out with the arrival of information, because I go on today and there's new information that's been put on some of the things today. So, you know, we can't always be 100% ahead of the game, unfortunately.
Dave and Chris.
Yeah, I just wonder on that, the fact that it was late and also that the notices don't seem to have gone up again in time. Maybe we should make a very strong complaint to Breckland and say what is happening, because it's about, there's three or four occasions recently where we've had members of the public saying they didn't know anything about it, nothing on the lamp posts. And, you know, we're receiving the information, we should be putting that stuff up at, certainly at the same time as not before then.
Doing for that, we put that as a separate.
I mean, I can, I can write some and say and talk about the fact that we've received, you know, it's happened several times recently.
Happening creep close, isn't it?
Yeah.
Chris, you're on, come on.
We had a case at Breckland State I was watching, and a complete thing was called in, and the planning officer's excuse was that he was on a fortnight's holiday. I mean, there must be enough staff that's happened here, they can't, I'm going to send him an email and ask him why this is happening. You know, the notices aren't going up at that.
Normally, you would have some kind of holiday cover, so the process should still be in place.
Planning is contentious enough, but I think it's important that people feel as if they've been able to object.
That's right, yeah.
Okay. Right, we'll send that there, thank you. So, we're then on to pick off the old Marcus Street, so these are changes to tiles once more, so we had this before.
We have, and they keep coming back, and we've also got another revision, which is 1175, which is one of the lates that came in today. And what's been happening is it's been going and the historic building officer has been complaining about the use of concrete tiles, because he didn't want concrete tiles used. And therefore, that's been the complaint that has gone through, so this is yet another revision that has come back.
Okay, so does 1176 get superseded by 1175 or are they both?
I know, 1175 is a different one, that's for casements, but it's on the same property. We've probably had eight applications.
So, that's change of roof materials on that one, from clay to.
Yeah. Yeah, to shire, so he's had, because it's on a listed building, they have to approve of the tiles that are used. And the ones that he had on the last time round were concrete, and so he wouldn't agree to those.
To go with not, not concrete.
So, because the problem is, is they can't, the problem has been is they haven't been able to get hold of them. And these ones terracotta as opposed to sand.
Okay, so just to clarify then, are we looking, we're looking at, this says, change from clay
Yeah.
to this shire.
To this terracotta, yeah, because the last time they tried to change it from clay to concrete and they refused it.
So, in terms of colour, are we going with the?
Grain.
Are we all happy with that? Yep, so we support it.
Okay. Because we have seen several for this, I think, probably in the last few months.
Sounds like a historic guy has got his front car on this.
Yeah, well, I'm pleased to hear that. So, the next one down 1230 is the condition three, which is the change of clay to concrete.
Yeah, so that.
But a listed building one.
Yeah. So, and he's, he has objected, the use of concrete tiles is not supported. So, he hasn't used, in this one, he hasn't used the concrete ones.
Yeah, but what's before us is the change from clay pantal to concrete.
Yeah.
So, we want to object to that.
Object to that one, yeah.
It's a different property.
Yeah.
Well, one of it, one of it is listed, isn't it, one part of it is listed.
For the listed building.
Yeah, listed building, so we've, concrete on that.
Right, so we get to that one.
Okay. Object to support HBO, yeah.
Yeah. So, then on to 1231, this is the Health Inews Centre.
You're whizzing through these, right.
Which is a breeze soleil, slats across there to stop the sunlight coming in.
Pounds of tiles.
Found out what breeze soleil is. I don't know what breeze soleil is.
Do you all look at one up?
Tell the town. I thought it's a sunshine, really, that's what it means.
I wonder why they didn't put one on to start with, or whether it was a cost.
Well, it's, apparently it's to reduce, reduce the heat, because when it's, when it's open and it's the summer, the temperatures inside got too high. And so, they need to put it in in order to reduce the.
But I would have thought, you know, we're not telling it went up in 1930s, it was only, yes, a dozen years ago. It would have been two.
You're in English.
Have solar panels.
Well.
I think there was a bit of the bottom of the fourth column there, just showing it, it doesn't give you too much, is what I want.
Yeah. So, basically, yeah, it's slapped pretty much.
Yeah. Big lover of the built.
Oh, no, I was going to say, it's probably one of its nicer features.
So, are we happy to support that, under the environmental aspect of trying to, you know.
Do it in English, shall we?
Do it in English.
Boiling everybody.
We want English ones, don't we, not?
It's difficult to not use English, you know, the better or worse. Whatever.
Yeah, yeah, get on with it, yeah.
The next one.
I learned one tonight, that's good.
Oh, on my computer, don't blow. Right, so, one, two, three, five, zero.
Yeah, one, two, three, one, that was.
Yeah, so we're on to.
One, two, five, zero, which is this green lane, change of use of dwelling to a five-bed care home for young persons. There is.
Right.
Doesn't seem to be changing the actual building style.
So, the, like I said, the internals, what they've done is they've, if I can show you, they've split one of the rooms to make an extra bedsit room, so that there's now six instead of five. I've got rather a lot of paper on my desk.
Dennis, you want to come in?
Yeah, just on, on, on it, I think that we're in need of these things more and more. Um, and all I can say that I will support it definitely, yeah.
I can show you.
Because in terms of neighbours, you've got Redgate House one side, haven't you, which is obviously in the care. Eddie. With the young persons, then you won't have too much traffic being generated, one would not fail from. So, you know, I'll be generally happy to support.
Yeah.
Quiet country day.
Yes. Quite.
There's no external works proposed to the property or it's curtly, and it's limited internal.
So just splitting the rooms inside, I think, that is, no, it's any difference from the, I'm talking about support.
Yep.
Yep, thank you. H ten twelve fifty eight. There you go, automated car wash facility in existing yard with the inclusion of solar panels to the roof.
I'm really disappointed you didn't break out and car wash. You're just gonna sing car wash. You let me down, I thought you were gonna do that. So, Eric, I have an automated car wash facility within the existing yard with the inclusion of solar panels on the roof. And this is on Stevenson Way, adjacent to the UK Food Catering VCA food services unit. Just pull up my papers on it.
Okay.
Um, I have a bit of this, so I have Stevenson Way. And from a physical point of view, absolutely fine, it's a show to say, it's sensible. And the only thing I wasn't clear, and I was trying to have a quick read of the documents, um, where the water goes. Because obviously the car washes, not necessarily, but some of them do use particular chemicals. It's probably more of a sort of licensing sort of issue rather than planning. But we'd wanna make sure that, um, you know, they don't put stuff down the drains, frankly, that they shouldn't be.
Yeah, Norfolk have classed it as a minor development and, and therefore they have to follow the um, flood and water management gardens on Norfolk County Council's flood. And they have to put in, if there's an incident of flooding, they have to get Norfolk County Council in. So basically what they've done in their letter is, is they have, um, put in informa, you know, put in their information on the notices that, you know, their comment of links for them.
So, but in general terms, they would be prohibited to use, you know, chemicals that are harmful.
Yeah, yeah, they'd have to follow all the normal.
But that would be, that would be normal conditions rather than.
Licensing rather than planning.
I think it'd be worth making comment of that to make sure that somebody doesn't overlook it.
Yeah.
Um, because, you know, that is the sort of, this is our end of town and things to get into the walk or something.
They use re-techniques normally in car washes, but, but it's worth mentioning, isn't it?
Yes.
So would you.
So we'll do support, but, um, just.
However, need confirmation that all appropriate environmental water regulations are adhered to.
We don't want it flowing down to the cemetery and ends up in the tent.
It might neutralize some of the other things.
Imagine all these things floating down the.
Okay, on to I then, this is our old friends, advertisements on roundabouts.
Yes. Of which we have two.
At the moment, they're only on the, the roundabouts, so these are the new ones, aren't they?
So they're literally just, there's two different roundabouts, there's two different applications, you've got this one, you've got this way, and you've got the one.
In the past, we've been a bit reluctant to, because as you're saying, as a money grabbing exercise from Norfolk County Council, um, doesn't add to anything to.
Yeah.
Improve the look of the roundabouts or give a funding stream to do some gardening on the roundabouts. It's been, it's just a money grabbing, it's like, so I think we've always been a bit reluctant to support.
Matt. I object to it, and the reason I object to it, um, is because for the last three years, I've been asking highways to remove all the dead signs, temporary signs, which they haven't done, they've left them there. They're not interested in it.
Or people strap things to.
Yeah, so the, the eight frames that they put up and then they put diversion signs on, many of them have been there for, you know, many years now. I've directly challenged highways engineer to have them removed. He says it's not his fault, it's another company, it's a subcontractor. They're not interested in it. The other thing about these signs is, and I cleared the roundabout quite a lot of rubbish, is they're used as targets for people throwing cans at. On roundabouts in particular, it's some kind of European hobby, I don't know why, but that's, it's a thing. And what's really worrying about it, mostly it's on the driver's side, because they're throwing it out that way. But that again, what that doesn't show you is that sign there is prede, preceded by a lot of other big, large signs. So all you're doing is adding to the clutter in our town, I'm afraid. But so I, I, I object to it quite strongly because A, none of the money's gonna come to us, it's not gonna benefit us. It's gonna clutter our town, and actually, we haven't done anything to reduce the other clutter that's there already. So.
I'm going to increase.
I mean, I, I object, I mean, basically, we're inundated with adverts every way which way. And I think, you know, having around town, it's a distraction. The driver's eye should be on the road, not looking at adverts.
Chris.
That's my issue. We've not rejected in the past to adverts on the side of roads, toted by various places, because it distracts drivers. You know, it's gonna distract drivers on roundabouts. So from what I've seen recently, a lot of them don't have driver. So I think.
We happy to object.
These also seem to be a bit larger than the ones on the roundabouts as well. And so, you know, if we're gonna have to have them, do they have to be so big? And also, they, I, I mean, the, the pictures that was up there showed a nice big gap for pedestrians to get past. I wanna make sure that there's enough room for pedestrians to walk along there. That is quite, I will use this verge on there.
Just, just one other thing on that, um, that whole verge along there, which is quite a wide path, the two point seven. But has actually lost about half a metre, uh, through grass growing out now. And also, the post that goes, where those things are gonna go, we won't be able to cut around it. We already know that the cutting regime is down to a minimum now anyway, once a year. So that's gonna be another excuse not to cut that piece, which is gonna make the centre of the town even more unkept.
Okay, so. So objections on.
Yeah, can I just, just quantify, signs are, um, uh, three thousand mil times eighty nine mil.
Three metres.
Yeah, so a metre by, just under a metre by about a three foot, isn't it, is high, that's how tall they are.
So it's no foot.
Yeah, um, signs will be positioned a minimum of a thousand mil away from the edge of the road. Overall height of signs from ground level, no more than two thousand millimetres. So there's obviously, there must be gap at the top and the bottom, at the bottom obviously, so the actual sign itself, um.
So it's actually forcing pedestrians to go nearer the road as they're going along. Driving is a safety hazard. So you're, that could be a metre, not, I don't know, it's wide enough for the path.
So, um, adverts are a distraction to drivers, roundabouts already cluttered and not cleared, cutting of grass will be reduced, will be restricted. And, um, clearance for pedestrians will be reduced.
Yeah, yeah.
So when you, when they come up to that roundabout, it should really be looking right to see who's coming there, not looking left to see what it says on the advert.
I thought we'll stay, have a whole ring around eventually.
Not forgetting that.
Full ring.
Historically, there was a death on that one, where, um, the lorry went on the person, so.
So, um, can I assume that for one two seven six for the?
Same, same comment supply.
Comment supply.
Is that, is that, is that only one sign, the one, the one we've just been looking at? It's not only four approaches around that, just on.
There's only one sign.
You're on the one, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll say is it's advertising for the passengers, okay, not driving, but it's still.
Seems like a left-hand drive.
For those people who are car sharing, yeah, you can see on here, there's the, um, one, one site.
Yeah.
So attractive, isn't it?
You give them one, they make more.
Two.
Two nine nine. This two Sherlock Road, conversion of the first floor section of the double garage into home office, including the external staircase. Have we had this one before, or we have a similar one?
Similar one.
We had a similar one.
Yeah, on Charnock, so they go, you can see the site there, and you can see where they want to actually put the garage in.
But it's just a conversion of the existing.
Yeah.
Garage, and it's not, and the external staircase being added to allow access to it.
And this is the change to the, to the direction of the new double garage. With a pitched roof, they must listen to our planning meetings.
Show me the roof, so that.
It has to be pitched really to get anything in there.
Got flat garage roofs, have you not been in these Mary Porters?
They've got much room, space in that.
So is it already there with the pitch roof and they're just putting the door windows in, yeah?
I believe so.
Yeah.
They've got door windows and then the, um, external staircase stuck on the side.
So if there's not much room, they can get out far the roof, isn't it, on it? Have a soft top car. Highways.
So I think we're gonna see more and more of these, so people, you know.
People more, so there's space, yeah.
And the ones on Charlotte, the footprint is quite big and there is sufficient, sufficient space for cars off the road anyway. But I think in other areas where you don't have such generous parking, it will be an issue because people, you know, holding their car out the garage onto the road is gonna create a lot of issues.
This is preferable, isn't it?
Three or so.
I don't know, I mean, often garages, I mean, the cars are, you know, I, I, I used to have a garage that was the nineteen fifties, so I could just about get my car in. But have garages increased in size compared to the car sizes? I mean, I don't think people can get their cars in garages.
These ones are quite, they're quite big. Double one, anyway, but you know, you try. I, I agree. Don't have my car in my garage.
Yours is a model.
Where we've got all our jobs.
Exactly.
That's it, yeah.
Right, moving on.
You take all of your large cars to the recycling.
Yes. Can't afford it, yeah. So on to L thirty oh five, this is Raymond Street Crescent, one additional bedsit associated externally, internal repairs.
So, yeah.
So on, this is the corner, isn't it, of the.
Yeah, so there you go, this one here.
And down to the other road.
Because you've got this one and one three oh six is the listed building, go together, so they go together, yeah.
So in terms of, um, the footprint, it's not, nothing changes, just internal.
Yeah.
Then got external and internal repairs.
Yeah, so there's, the historic building officer had no objection to the change of use or the repairs. And highways had no objections but have put some conditions on the, on the, it's the normal ones of, you know, nothing is to overhang the highway and, um, prior to the first occupation, um, the proposed car and cycling parking area should be laid out, et cetera, et cetera, so that will, it's, it's kind of the normal.
So it sounds as though the bed and breakfast was, they're just, they're subdivided to create an additional bedsit.
Yeah.
And that the rest of the house is still gonna be occupied by the other. So previously we would have had traffic movements associated with the bed and breakfast, now you're gonna, you know, car associated with the bedsit. The other.
Hmm.
Um, comments or we have to support?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they'd adopt the piece of grass at the front.
Yeah, we've got bush on there as well.
Yeah.
There's trees with rats for a long time. Someone there keeps feeding the hedgehogs.
Is that A?
They're not hedgehogs.
Rats, that's the hedgehog acid, always there.
Okay.
So that goes for the listed building bit as well then.
Yeah, okay, you're happy with that?
Yeah. So thirteen oh six then M. That was.
There's loads of these.
So this, so I'm correct, wrong then, because they're saying it's the creation of HMO? I thought it's gonna be just the house next to it.
Yeah, so what it, what it, what it says in the, says in here.
It's gonna be an HMO.
So, um.
It's a hostel, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's, um, property is currently used as a single dwelling and was used as a bed and breakfast prime. So what they're changing it is to a si, from a single dwelling to a house in multiple occupation. So the application had pre-application applications with the planning officers and the conservation officer. There was considerations, there was no high risk considerations relevant to the proposal, as the existing access will be retained and used, and there's no new access routes.
As I understand it, what they're essentially doing is rather than paying for people in private BMBs and hotels, just put in the mood to hear. What I'm not clear about is what staff and support that'd be. And this one, I must confess, but, you know, one would hope there'll be some sort of staff presence, um, you know, of your partners rather than just.
So the applicant is Breckland, so are they, they have purchased, so.
Yeah. I think the thing is, is about the actual operations won't be, probably it's not gonna be listed in the planning, is it?
No, exactly, but as long as it's well managed, but that's, they've essentially used capital money to buy it, not sell it on market. Um, and that's what they're gonna do with it.
Thanks.
Yeah, so basically, is this a housing for a homeless kind of thing?
Short term stay, yeah.
Short term stay, or, I think, it's hard to object to that, but, I mean, is there any parking facilities at all?
Um, any of the ones that were previously with it.
Which is.
So it would have been on, yeah.
This is sorry.
One of the things about this place is it's massive and it's, it's on a really small plot, so the garden and the bit at the back is quite small. So when we object to the back of Lane, for having very little amenity space, you know, we disregard this one because it's gonna be a, um, HMO. I'm a bit lost on that somehow.
The difference is it's, it won't be for families, and also because it's short term, so that, you know, I think maximum they're allowed to stay is six months. Right, the idea is they go in there and they get moved out fairly quickly into something more permanent.
It's another cost or thing.
It, it's like, I'm right, it's, it's rather than, as I did with Amro, they bought up a private house to do this.
Chris, you're on, come in.
I, I think the term HMO is misleading. This is what threw me completely, I mean, if you've said to me, you're a bit of a nation, I don't like. I mean, I, I never knew that miles away, the Breton Board is gonna use it as a short term stay, that's completely different to an HMO.
It's probably the coding, isn't it, because it's, because it's, it's not a family or a single person, therefore.
My daughter works in housing in, in Suffolk, and they use all those houses over at Milton or Brandon, they're still terms of HMO. They still are HMOS.
So that's a terminology.
Yeah, that's a lot of it is about the building breaks, isn't it, because they have to fire doors, all that stuff. Once they've classified it as that and there's multiple, people have got their own front doors within the building, they have, there's lots more regulations they have to comply with.
I mean, I would hope the fact that Breckland have bought it, it would be better looked after than the ones that Mr G looks after, for instance.
I would bet on that, not with the hostels, we've gotten set for the not looked after properly already by Breckland. So.
Back to where we were, are we having support?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're then on to thirteen ten then, this is Riverside Walk, variation condition two, to increase opening hours by one hour on Friday, it's at nights to four AM. I presume this is ice, is it?
Yes.
Do you know anyone else who's open to four AM?
Just thinking Riverside, I don't think Jane's bookshop was.
So the historic building officer had no objection.
No, well, I don't think there's a lot left there to look at.
Maybe he doesn't go.
But presumably the police have a view. Are there any comments from them?
We've got, we've got stag meeting tomorrow and it is dutyfully raised at that because I saw it was on the agenda. One of, one of the issues with this is remember our Little Vegas.
Hmm.
The opening times on that were geared around what ICE had. He said it will, it will match their night to our nighttime economy. Now, as we incrementally change that, that's going to.
They're going to put them the option to change as well.
Yeah. Because, because what they've put is to remain competitive and more importantly financially viable, we need to hire DJs from London on Essex on certain weekends of each month. In order to recoup these additional fees, it is essential that we have additional trading hours.
What?
Well, I, I, when they, I've looked at the licensing applications, when they've wanted to extend their hours, you know, with the police have put in their concerns about what happens and, and, you know, and, and the issues that happen. So, you know, there always seems to be, you know, the police called out and, and all sorts of things when they have their, their extensions there. So, you know, I don't see why they need to, um, have a permanent opening till four AM, carry on asking for the extensions, you know? If, if there's a facility now for them to extend their hours, when, you know. It's also have to go to licensing as well as part of the approval.
Variation, but just lost.
I, I think it does, but they won't turn it down.
Absolutely.
That's, that's my concern.
Part of me thinks, you know, you don't, uh, young people do use it, uh, and you don't want to lose a, an amenity. But obviously in this case, they're saying, I don't know whether the extra hour generated sufficient to, to do that. But, you know, so are we a supporter or objector?
So I find it quite difficult because it, a three AM exists for a reason. You know, surely there must be something from a police or a sort of licensing point of view that says the three AM. In my own head, between three and four AM, people are sufficiently drunk that they carry on spending and actually just get more and more drunk. And that's why you end up with public safety issues and that sort of thing. So I think probably three o'clock, the, the earlier the cut off, the better frankly, so they go by before they get completely drunk. Um, but I don't know, but I would be inclined not to support it because it exists for a reason at the moment and that's why it was put in place.
So we've got an objector, are we happy to object?
I'm, I'm happy to object.
So the objection being?
In the counter, be it to reduce the hours.
Open negotiations, objection that.
It's for soft drinks only.
Yeah.
Can make more profit on those.
That's a tease.
So we're about to stagger it.
I probably wouldn't let us in.
The preservation of public safety, the extra hour is considered unnecessary. Yeah, in.
We've got public safety bill, so those living in town centre as well, but.
There are, yeah, there are concerned. People live there.
Of residents.
Many, right.
But give them some other tips on how to get more customers though, other than over.
Make proper booking.
For sure.
Opening in the afternoon, tea and biscuits.
So in consideration.
Children's couldn't climb them stairs.
Anti-social behaviour.
Um, but also there also exists the opportunity to ask for extensions.
Yeah.
Considered.
Start an hour early.
Later, later, these, they're free drinker.
We don't start, people don't get it till one o'clock, probably.
Where do they get all the money?
Dread to think that is.
Yeah, that's true.
The other one is, they, they talk about, um, competition with all the other nightclubs in Thetford.
So much competition, British agent.
I mean, for us, we can licence till two, but we don't serve past midnight.
Yeah.
For that exact reason, because then actually it all starts to head downhill after that. David's just kept him sensible.
So on to thirteen twenty-two O, which is two-story roof extension to four Scott Close.
Yes, we've seen this one before, they've come back and changed it.
The extension was out the front before, and now they moved it to the back.
It's refused.
The front one was refused, I think.
It's like changed, yeah.
Have they refused it? Have they all refused it?
Yeah, we, we, we were like, um, yeah.
They refused the front one, yeah. They've shifted the back one, go on.
That's existing.
How big is the extension?
I've got us to scale out.
So go back to that existing.
Did you want me to get it off the board for you to look at?
It's just really the side bit, isn't it?
Yeah, that's in the hatchway.
Yeah.
On the far one, yeah.
It's the flat.
Don't ever stop putting these up on air because it's so much easier to confirm on these. Use on that.
Yeah.
You can't do it.
We never used to do it this way at all, so, I mean, you know.
It's, it's worth doing it. I know it's not.
I agree with that, we've always.
Support.
We have to produce everything that we're. Happy to support?
Yeah.
Cheers, happy to support.
Yep.
Right, on to lights then.
Lights. So they're not necessarily in numerical order. I did them as I got them. Karen will know that I've been stressing my head off about them today. Because I thought I'd done them all and then they're just more kept coming up.
So eleven seventy-five was the other one to do with Old Market Street, was it?
Yes, so we can go to that one if you want to, because literally it's the same, um, I've put the extra plans down there. It is about changing, let me just get my paper out. One one seven five, so basically the proposal is for new slimline double glazed flush timber casements and new single glazed like-for-like timber sash windows. Do you remember it came up before and these now are flush rather than, so they fit?
Okay, so they were.
So they're actually, yeah, they're actually thinner slimline windows.
Historic building officers' comments or anything?
No.
So they are.
But this is about the third, I think this is our third look at them.
But reason he's come back with them then, he must have had some guidance or.
Because it was what they've put in. So what they've had to do was the replacement of all existing painted timber, because apparently it's quite rotten. Um, and single glazed windows with a slimline double glazed flush timber casement and single glazed like-for-like timber. So it's still timber frames.
Yes.
Um, but they've gone for the slimline ones, so it's a bit like we were talking about the internal stuff for the Guildhall. It'll fit inside it rather than on it, yeah.
So from an external point of view, you're not going to change.
It doesn't look any different. I do think I'd put them up on there.
You did, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's time for us to come again.
But I think, I think the first one, they went PVCed and then it got kicked back and you said absolutely no way whatsoever. Then it was ones that were, weren't really, weren't like-like.
Yeah.
So this is.
Yeah.
Looked out the block. So, um, here we look.
Would you let us?
This one's, so one three.
They're allowed to do that.
So one three three five is the roadside restaurant with parking and association works at the service station west of, at the eleven. So they are. Just a few documents.
Yeah. I noticed when I was going through the plans and everything, that it, 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 there's a place where they tick boxes on the actual plan thing. And two boxes were left kind of blank and, uh, about rubbish disposal or disposal of waste. And they, they didn't, they didn't say yes or no to them. So, you know, that, that immediately makes me think what's going on, I would think.
So trade affluent, does the proposal involve the disposal of trade affluence always? No, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Um, so there's no change in internal floor space, um, uh, and, but there is a new internal floor space of three, well, pretty much three hundred and forty-one square metres. So let me just get onto there. Problem is you can't really, can you see it? So I, I wish that these side, outside would be a lot easier.
So that's the existing site plan, it's been overlaid on where the trees are. Taking out those trees here.
Yeah.
To get in the side.
Where previously there was nothing.
Yeah.
There has to be an increase in floor space.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, three hundred and.
Well, you're like west side of the road, is it?
Yeah, the west side going out, yeah.
The, the Norwich bound carriage was.
Yes.
That's right.
No, it's outside.
So then you're coming down from Muck Road.
Yeah. Yeah, it's outside.
So it's a, it's a new roadside restaurant. Any planning pose or?
We don't know who it is, but, um.
It now, but, well, it's just who the, it's just the normal people who, it's the motorfield group who own.
Yeah.
Most of them, don't they, then sell, sell the franchise off.
Well, it wouldn't be Burger King if we got one of them coming in.
So.
Not going to be your near name, or?
No.
So basically it's next to the petrol station.
Yeah.
Well, we had this fairly recently, didn't we? And, and we objected on the grounds of environmental loss, didn't we?
It was on the other side, there were charging bays and that sort of thing. Yeah.
So it's on the far side of the carriage line?
Yes, this is on the waterworks side.
Yeah.
And the other one was on the other side.
The sewage one, it's like, oh, okay, sorry, I'm going the one way around.
Yeah. That other one was approved by Grant.
How was it, oh, okay.
I don't.
It doesn't encroach on the SPA or the triple S I.
No.
Is it separated by the road?
So we've got lots of trees or anything going in there?
I think there was an environmental assessment on the other one.
Old consumption of petrol stations planning.
Trees are rubbish trees anyway.
Yeah.
Rubbish trees.
Especially.
The low environment.
Just a bunch of fir trees.
Fully rubbish.
Yeah, probably full of rubbish food. It's got some rubbish up the building.
Yeah. It should be made, made to replace the trees, like-for-like, even if they do have. Even if they're rubbish trees. Even if they could get rid of the old traveller compound and fill that full of trees.
Yes.
Yeah, let's do that.
Make an enhancement, isn't it?
Yeah.
So basically what they've said is, um, that the, that it has to demonstrate and that there are reasons that proposals outweigh the need to safeguard any special ecological interest in sight. Um, and it has been demonstrated by development, um, if it has been demonstrated by the development result in harm, that it cannot be reasonably located on to alternative site. And so, so basically, the, the, the council requires that a habitat regulations assessment is undertaken on all proposals. Um, and development will only be permitted where it can be demonstrated that the proposal will adversely affect the integrity of the S P. So they've put conditions in against that anyway.
So I could, sorry, happy to support, but ask that the replacement trees are sighted on the Old Travels.
Yep.
Oh, I'm an asking.
Let's do that. Yeah. If, if nothing else, people who stop there, that, that reflects greatly on Thetford.
That does look really bad, the travellers.
You know, if we've got a, a new, whatever the restaurant is, it doesn't really matter, but if, if the rest of it is reasonably clean, it gives a better impression of town.
Yes, absolutely, we, we welcome investment in that location, but we'd strongly highlight, you know, the aesthetics of the area and the amount of rubbish. I go out there sometimes because they're one of the parcel companies used, that's one of them, to infect them, that's one of them. So occasionally I go there, horrible looking place, and I think we should really stress that in our comments, that, you know, if you want to spend some money out there, great, entirely the place up.
As it is a window.
Just in terms of ownership of the old traveller site, is that still under Crown?
No, it's Breckland.
Breckland, Breckland owned it, yeah.
So even the, um, the, the sort of roadway, the, the slipway, I assume that's part of the petrol station, but the whole sort of slipway there is, is on.
Yeah.
When Breckland did a consultation on that travellers side.
I didn't know they took a lease from Crown on it.
They might have.
They, they put a little caravan near the sports centre and put two people in it per day and didn't, uh, didn't do anything else.
That's all we got in the team.
I put, I'm supporter, although, although we welcome investment, um, council strongly wish to highlight the aesthetics of the area as it is a window to Thetford and should be enhanced and maintained to a good standard.
Yeah.
Very nice work.
Also, it's worth just saying about the loss of trees.
Yeah, so.
For these to be.
The loss of trees.
I think we need more.
Should be offset by environmental.
Well, I've suggested, we suggest that they are, replacement trees are, yeah, you can, on the Old Travels side.
Yes.
Can't look any worse than it does now, can it?
Tree people, they'll be back again. We'll be long.
But we can say that we've got concerns about it's going to end up in the forest. Because, you know, what with Breckland's attempt to clear all the stuff the travellers left and then the residents of Abbey trying to clear it from the other end.
So can we add that in appropriate, you know, because I know when we had the KFC, we talked about enhancing the, the litter management signage and all that time there. At least you, you, you've got nothing to go with, have you? You've just got an outline plan.
It's a condition of the Forest Retail Park of their planning, that they have staff that go around the park, they don't just do it off their own back. And in places like this, they should be made to do it as well, it's their customers' responsibility.
As part of franchises' condition.
Little pick.
Yeah. Like a king, and goes there every time.
Oh, yeah.
Should be watching them.
But the loss of trees could be replaced by planting of new trees on the Old Travels side and that litter should be cleared regularly as part of the franchises' conditions.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, happy days. Okay, we're almost there, I promise. We're just moving along, so what's this one? This is one, three, uh, no, one, one three two eight, sorry. Yes, this is the last one. So this is a separate storage building and extension to the side of the factory at thirty-eight Brunel Way. And I believe that's the very end one up on there. I just slipped, so my plans are over there and not over here, so I'm going to have to go over there and have a look. Oh, Stuart's running over instead, okay.
Now, I, I know it's only a, um, a commercial building, but I did think it was really odd that the roof slope goes into the building. Is, is it me or is it?
It does look strange, doesn't it?
So rather than, rather than sloping away, goes into it.
So.
That's usually trouble.
There's no changes in the waste and storage collection areas, no changes in sewage, that's still going, um, to the same. There's no designated habitats or biodiversity features.
There's two extra jobs in there.
Yeah, there's no change of the, um, there's no. Uh, or total gross internal floor space new is, um, one thousand and twenty-eight square metres. So following changes to use classes on September, now revoke users, oh, that's, this is too generous, thank you. So they, yeah, they've got twenty-two employees and they will go up to twenty-four employees.
One square metre is each.
I think it's at, at the actual increase, it's something like three hundred square metres.
It was thirteen twenty-eight, we did eleven seventy-five, thirteen twenty-two, thirteen thirty-five, we did, yep, well done. Decisions are variance, um.
Oh, yes, well, I circulated these.
Oh, yeah.
There was a few, six, all of them had twenty-two pages of conditions. Which I'm sure you don't want to read to you, so I, I have circulated them previously to the full council to be noted, um.
Did you remember the six were?
Eight, seven, one, two, five, one.
House.
Yeah, well, one of them was Market Street.
I, I guess one was.
So, yeah.
I think one of them was the extension at the front of the house that's now gone.
Yeah, exactly, that's what drives one of them, so various, it was two or five, so that was the Albion. Limefield Lane. And the windows.
Limefield Lane being.
Yeah, one oh eight six, um, again, Market Street, so he appeared twice.
Well, it's five three oh twenty-two Suffolk County Council, as people may have picked up, it's been.
Oh, is it? Well, it went on there, it didn't, this morning, it didn't have the.
The press said it's Thursday, I think.
Oh, they haven't put that on there.
On email as a, uh, consultee that is this.
Really, because all that's got on there is a waiting decision and it hasn't got when the meeting is or anything on the website. It's a bit naughty, isn't it?
Because we caught those three articles, didn't we? And the way it read in the press, it was pretty much a complete. So I think, I don't think we've got opportunity now to get anything in, have we?
Yeah, fifteen December, it is, yeah.
I think we had, apparently councillors, I think we had five or six councillors have written in objections, haven't they? And that, um. It's interesting because are, are not the Wildlife Trust still maintaining their objections, they are, aren't they?
They are, naturally have removed their objection, that's why we're in committee.
Who's removed their objection?
So that they are, you know, they are, pretty much a deal breaker, an outstanding objection because of stone curvy. Um, and they've agreed between natural England and the applicant mitigation, so that we know, um, building works during the stone curvy nesting season. Um, and so, you know, that they're satisfied basically with the conditions, but the Norfolk Wildlife Trust and Suffolk Wildlife Trust are still objecting, but it doesn't.
Course up because they're the statute body, aren't they?
They seem to have got over with that, so I think, yes, it will be going ahead.
Right, five three one twenty-two, community engagement, anything?
Just thinking, had, there must be some more local plan stuff coming our way soon, isn't there?
Well.
They're not submitted it for the final.
Because just back on, was it the future Breckland thing that was announced? We, yes, we never had that input on planning into that, did we, it was very much a, you know, a bit lost to engage and talk about things, but, um. When I saw in the press, you know, talk about a new moorings downtown and stuff the other. Um, where do we get as a council to look at that and discuss that, have we, I don't think we've ever had that up on our agenda. And that's a Breckland document, it's a Breckland.
Well, what they do is when they do amendments, um, what they normally do is they send them all through to us, because every time they've amended the local plan, plans, like when they. Uh, they updated the tap, didn't they, so, but they sent those to us, those amendments to us, and then the Thetford area action plan. Was adopted into the local plan, so therefore the local plan then supersedes.
But what was announced in terms of future Breckland, was that on top of the local plan?
No, that's from within the local plan, the only thing that's happening, I think, still is they're still codifying areas, is that right?
I don't really understand what planning of.
Well, I think, I think there's still ongoing work that they're codifying.
Yeah.
Land usage.
It's on the local plan committee of reference.
Yeah.
Well, I'll try and find out, clarify that, how that fits in, because the Breckland, they named it through the press, the future Breckland goal is, but I don't think we've really.
Breckland have asked to come and do a presentation prior to full council in February.
All right.
So they're going to come and update us on future Breckland.
Okay.
Oh, that's something.
I, I have asked.
Presentations prior to full council, because full council's long enough as it is.
But did you want to at a different time?
Yeah, I think so, well, it's just a personal view, it's such everyone else, but, you know, last time, if you were here beforehand and we finished at what, ten o'clock, it makes it.
Last meeting we had was a long evening, yeah, we were here from half five till ten.
I, I guess the thing is then, is do you want it during the working day or do you want it in another evening?
Well, if you have it during the working day, you, you do potentially exclude people who do work on, who sit on this council, like work. But I know we have a lot of committee meetings during the day, but that has been, uh, in the past, but.
Because it's not for a decision or anything, it's for discussion, I mean, what we could do, if you did it during the days, is we could teams it. And therefore send the recording to all the councillors. That might be the way to do it, so that, you know, it's.
Yeah, I'm, I'm open.
Well, I'll write to Emma on our, on our seat, well, I'll find out how long the presentation is first as well, because you're on a separate meeting for like twenty minutes. So, um, we'll see, because we might be able to make it an agenda item if it's only a relatively.
Yeah.
Short.
All right, so then last things, five three two twenty-two, committee officers update.
Uh, I don't have anything else, um.
Well, thank everybody actually for their attendance. Happy Christmas.
Yes.
Yeah, Merry Christmas to all.